I'm off-center today. I don't want to say anything.
Welcome, everybody, to our January 26 City Regular City Commission Meeting. We'll call the meeting to order if you will please join me and to rise as Nikki leads us in the invocation and gives applause for allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. As we begin this meeting, let us all take a moment to reflect together, each according to our own individual beliefs and intentions.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nikki. You're welcome. All right, we've got some pretty special presentations tonight. Our first one is the Committee on Aging Intergenerational Week Essay Contest. So Elaine and Sandy, if you guys would come forward and lead the way.
Elaine, you got no feelings?
Come on, Elaine.
Thank you, Mayor, and all the commissioners, and our city clerk, and our city attorney, and city manager, and all of our guests tonight. So wonderful to see everybody tonight. Also, Elaine, I wanted to thank you, and I saw Jocelyn here.
Yep, she's back there.
And Anne Marie will be giving her speech in a little bit. Jocelyn, that's okay. So, thank you for being here and supporting this. This is probably one of my most favorite times to come when we give the prize for the essay contests. And because the intergenerational initiatives, they are really to improve relationships between all age groups in our community, as well as cultivate relationships across our age groups that result in really developing mutual respect for one another of different age groups, and then also to have an understanding between the age groups, and to develop a caring for one another, a sensitivity of one another, because no matter at what age, what is it we need? We need to be cared for, validated, and respected for our differences. This year, the Committee on Aging had participation of three of our schools in Dunedin, Dunedin Middle, Our Lady of Lords, and Discovery Academy of Science. The writers are all eighth graders, and I can say I am definitely more hopeful for the future after reading some of their essays and some of their views about other people and human beings in their lives. There were many wonderful stories of grandmothers and grandfathers, and celebrities, and even teachers. And also wanted to ask, is Mr. Milo in the room?
Yeah, he's right there.
You've been there all that time. I wanted to say thank you to you, Mr. Milo. He is our teacher. He has supported this activity for as many years as I can remember, so thank you so much. And he should be pretty proud. All of our winners this year were from Dunedin Middle School, so thank you for that. So enough of that. I'd like to go ahead and introduce our first winner. It's our third-place winner tonight, and it's Talia R. Murtha, and her family is here, so I want to welcome them. And Talia, if you will come forward and share your essay with everyone tonight.
She's right there. Welcome, Talia.
Okay. My dance teacher has been a huge inspiration to me throughout my dancing years. Patricia McNally, or as I call her, Miss Patty, has shown me how to express myself through dance, a breathtaking form of art. When I was younger, I doubted my abilities as a dancer. At my lowest points, Miss Patty has shown me I can be more than I could ever imagine. I could be unstoppable. To me, Miss Patty is one of the most empowering women I know. An important lesson she has taught me is to be comfortable in my own skin. She is like a parent to me, and I'm so grateful for her kindness. Miss Patty has such good advice since she has gone through many difficult times. She learned how to be strong and deal with tough situations. She got hip surgery, and after a week, she was back on her feet. I'm greatly inspired by her because not a lot of people are able to power through hardships. When I go to her for advice, she never judges me. Even if I did something that could be unforgivable, she still stands by my side. I feel so comfortable dancing as her student because I know she will push me to be the best version of myself. Overall, Miss Patty is an amazing woman. She has taught me so many valuable lessons I will never forget.
Very good.
This is Ann Marie Winters from the Area Agency on Aging, and she is giving you your prize and your certificate. Thank you so much. I loved your dancing. My next life, I'm going to be a dancer.
Congratulations.
I'd like to introduce now Sophia Hanff, and she is here with her family, and she is our second-place winner, so come on down.
Welcome, Sophia.
You know he's coming by the sound of his New York accent, his funny shuffle walk, and his strong coffee breath. These are some of the quirks that make my grandpa my favorite older person. He grew up poor on Long Island shining shoes to make money at age nine. His entrepreneurial spirit led him to his future of being a successful attorney and now an appellate court judge. My grandpa's always encouraged me in my education and is one of my biggest softball fans. He teaches me to embrace my Norwegian heritage and tells me the best folklore stories of trolls in Norway. He inspires me to shoot to the men, follow my dreams, and always be myself. I love staying at my grandpa's house and waking up early on Sunday morning to go to garage sales so he can use his tough New York background to get us the best deals. He never fails to make me laugh with all the funny jokes he tells me and my siblings. Watching my uncle's baseball games on TV with him is so fun, even if he falls asleep on the couch. There hasn't been a funnier or more inspiring person of any age that can compare with my grandpa, and I can only hope that one day I'll be as entertaining to my grandchildren and have a memorable coffee breath just like his.
Congratulations.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good job.
This is our first-place winner, and welcome to come tonight, and please share your essay tonight.
Welcome.
Make sure to keep your back straight, my piano teacher would tell me often. The piano was a hobby I really did not enjoy when I was younger. Mr. Peterson, my piano teacher, would have a significant impact on my work ethic and view of life. Although someone who has not played any instruments may not think too much of music, piano involves patience, staying calm, and conveying your feelings. Mr. Peterson taught me that. One of the hardest parts of playing the piano or an instrument was when songs became a lot more challenging, which as an effect takes way more time to practice. As I continued to practice, songs became more challenging and I wanted to give up. As a result, I took a break when COVID-19 hit and made excuses not to practice. When I met Mr. Peterson again at my brother's piano recital, he taught me that sometimes it's okay to quit, but you should never give up because something is too difficult to confront. It is important to face your fears and push through the obstacles when the time comes. He explained that if there is something that is too difficult for you, try to take easier steps and work your way up. Although he has passed away, his words has helped me keep pushing through. Currently, I am relearning the piano, now with an interest of playing songs for the people close to me.
And, you know, certainly, thank you, Anne Marie.
We would just like to thank the Dunedin Committee on Aging. This is one of our most favorite partnerships with the Area Agency on Aging. We're the community resource that provides home and community-based services for seniors to keep them out of nursing homes and in the communities that they love, like the wonderful, amazing place like Dunedin. Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
And I would like to just thank, of course, the families of our winners, but I also would like to thank those from our Committee on Aging who are here tonight. And we have Jenny Moore, and Mary Ann Fisher, and Cindy Cole, who joined us tonight. Thank you for being here and supporting us. Thank you all for this opportunity. Thank you.
And thanks again to the kids and their hard work and the families that are there to support them. We really appreciate it. One more round of applause for the kids. Okay, now I'd like to call up Phyllis Gourche, our library director, to tell us about our winners of the City of Dunedin Martin Luther King Jr. Essays.
Okay, so it's a night of essay contest. The City of Dunedin hosts a Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest annually, and all of our winners got to read their essays at the Martin Luther King Jr. Diversity Breakfast on Saturday, January 14th, and their essays are online, so if anybody did want to read them, they are attached there. But tonight, I would like to recognize our winners that were able to make it. So I'd like to welcome to the dais Demetra Alexandra from Dunedin Highland Middle School, Novak Konjanowski from Dunedin Middle School, Ian Rodriguez from Discovery Academy of Science, and I know you guys are coming up. I know you're out here.
Come on, guys.
Ian Rodriguez from Discovery Academy, Claire Wang from Discovery Academy of Science, and Maya Zornitsky from Discovery Academy of Science.
Very good. Welcome, guys.
So we have a certificate and a nice gift card for each of our winners, so I am going to pass those out to Novak and to Ian. And I heard someone has a soccer game they got to get to. Claire, I don't think he's wearing a suit jacket, though. And Maya Zornitsky, thanks for coming tonight. So please recognize our winners.
Congratulations. You guys, you got, turn around so your parents can take pictures.
Well, we're missing one. We're missing one, yeah.
You guys did a great job at the Martin Luther King Breakfast, and we really do appreciate it. Congratulations. Okay, so anybody that needs to go ahead and leave, you may, before we get into the next section of citizen input and action items.
You can be on the dull side.
Yeah, we think.
Wait, well, sometimes.
Go get that soccer game. All right, while those folks are leaving, we do have citizen input, which is a time for folks to come forward and speak to any item that is not already on the agenda. Anybody wish to come forward? You have three minutes. Give us your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Tim Bordeaux, 1742 Hickory Gate Drive North, Dunedin, Florida. One question. Have you ever been harassed? Have you ever been retaliated on? Some time ago, a city official by the name of Jorge Quintez, I was asked, I've never mentioned names before, I was asked to mention names, so I'm going to mention names. Jorge Quintez accused me of restricting water flow from my neighbor's property. I invited him out to show me what he was speaking of. We took a look, and you could literally see that the neighbor was two feet above my property. Jorge said that was not good enough visually. He asked me to get a survey done. I went and got a survey, came back for that area. He said, "No, you're mistaken. You need to get a topographical survey." Didn't know what it was. On your whole entire property, I own two acres, every tree, every height of the soil, everything, thousands and thousands of dollars. To get to the point, I gave that to Jorge. He said, "That wasn't good enough." It was by a certified surveyor. He said, "Wasn't good enough?" I had to get my neighbor to approve it. Went over to my neighbor and asked him to approve it. He said, "I'm two feet higher than you. What am I supposed to approve?" We walked back there. I asked him to approve it, do a letter. The neighbor did it. I went back to Mr. Quintez and asked him and gave it to him. He literally said, "I don't believe your neighbor signed this. You forged it." I said, "What can I do?" "Get me his phone number." I asked him politely. I said, "Mr. Quintez, could you please do me a favor? Look it up in public records and get it from there. I don't want to bug my neighbor." "No, you need to get me his phone number." I went back, got the gentleman's phone number, cellphone number. Neighbor called me that evening, said, "He doesn't like you." Obvious. He did call me to verify that this was, that I did write this. So my question is, have you ever been harassed? Have you ever been retaliated on? I brought this to, I won't mention any names here, but a person here. Not only, nothing was ever done with this. The individual was promoted to assistant or deputy city manager. Is that what the citizens deserve, somebody like that, to represent them? Just a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. If you want to leave your information for our city manager, she'll address it with you.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes.
So, Mr. Bordeaux, we have met with Mr. Bordeaux several times. We have met with Mr. Bordeaux with our attorneys in the room more than once. Mr. Bordeaux has a path moving forward. Code compliance is involved. It's in regards to notice of violation. He has a path moving forward in writing, and we're waiting for him to react to that letter specifically. I can't comment anymore on that because attorneys are involved in this situation. Jorge Quintez is our deputy city manager, and he is acting within his capacity as our deputy city manager in an ethical manner, and I support him entirely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward and speak to any item that's not already on the agenda? Okay, seeing or hearing none, we'll go into our action items. We have the first reading of Ordinance 2301, deleting and revising Chapter 62 Sales. Go ahead. I had moved on, but go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Name and address for the record.
Tim Bordeaux, 1742 Hickory Gate Drive North, Dunedin, Florida. We have not gotten anything in writing from our attorney. We've been told that the city manager keeps putting, I'm sorry, city attorney keeps putting off providing something in writing. I just want to make that clear. So if there's a miscommunication, we probably want to get that resolved between the two attorneys.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
There is some miscommunication. I have emails back and forth with their counsel of when they submitted, of when they received the response. It was a week and a half ago, so if they need to communicate with their attorney, they need to do that, but I can't comment on that, and I can't actually speak to them because I'm ethically not allowed to.
Because they don't have the representation.
Because they're represented by counsel, and their counsel's not here.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have the first reading of Ordinance 23-01, deleting and revising Chapter 62 Sales, Article II and Article IV. Nikki, can you please read Ordinance 2301 by title only?
Ordinance 2301, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, deleting and revising Chapter 62 Sales, Article II, peddlers and solicitors and canvassers, and Article IV, handbills of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dunedin, Florida, in their entirety, providing for codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of Ordinance 2301 on first reading by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
Subsumed.
Sergeant.
Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Toranga. Okay, who's presenting? Is that you?
I'll do a brief background. This is one of the last few ORC ordinances that is coming to you for review. It has been substantially reviewed for updates in the law with regard to First Amendment concerns that have occurred since that initial review and the council's and the commission's direction to bring back an ordinance. I understand staff has reviewed as well. It's also been reviewed by the sheriff's liaison to be sure that in terms of enforcement, the city's staff is ready to proceed. So that's the only presentation that I have. I know you all have looked at it. Your ORC has looked at it, and so we didn't prepare a more formal presentation than that.
Questions for the attorney? Anybody questions?
Question? I just have one, because I think we talked about this before. You know, I read the definitions, and it seems like, you know, you're selling something, you're peddling something, but it's still like, people that are literally walking homes during an election, candidates, legit, that is, I'm just trying to make sure.
That is a different type of speech than solicitating. Soliciting is commercial speech, which has less First Amendment protection.
And the ordinance actually exempts?
Correct.
It does.
Okay, and so all of it, you know, with leaving a flyer there, even if there's a no soliciting, I mean, that kind of thing, not that I would, I'm just trying to make sure.
So if you're.
This just doesn't apply at all?
If they're in an HOA, that has, this does not regulate, and we don't enforce HOA regulations. So if people have different rules within their neighborhood that might apply because they have, you know, not, but no, soliciting is by definition selling something, commercial speech. Political speech is our most protected speech under the First Amendment, and so, no, this ordinance does not prohibit that kind of political speech.
Right, and mainly, I just don't want to get in trouble. I don't want to offend anybody. I don't want to do something wrong. As I make sure I'm clear.
That is, that is true. Yes.
Quick, quick, more clarifying. So this meets the ORCs, and I withdrew all the documents, but the ORCs intent with regards to changing the definitions and streamlining the permitting process.
Correct. Yes. You're welcome.
Just a couple of quick questions, because, you know, we brought it up a few weeks ago. I brought it up. You know, there had been a complaint, one of our downtown businesses was standing out in the middle of the sidewalk in front of their business, but not in their business, and being aggressive with passerby's standing in the way and trying to hand them, you know, product samples or, you know, getting them to go inside the business. And people were walking to the other side of the road to get away from them. Does this prevent that from happening now?
Correct. This was revised to address, I'm trying to find the specific sessions.
I mean, I saw where it says if you're blocking the sidewalk or whatever.
Public rights of way, et cetera, exactly. And that type of commercial speech flowing out from a business would also be prohibited by this ordinance.
Okay, so the other, the next complaint we've had over time, and again, I'm not saying whether I agree or disagree, I'm just putting the complaint out so we understand how this affects it. There's a gentleman that stands in the middle of the sidewalk, sometimes in the middle of the trail with a megaphone. He's using religious speak, speech is what he's doing.
So that is a different area that is not covered by this solicitation ordinance, but as we've talked about, if you and your colleagues want to look at certain time, place, and manner restrictions, that can be placed on all speech, your parks, your sidewalks, those are considered your traditional public fora, and so those are the most restrictive in terms of what the government can regulate, but commercial speech is different. So to your point about the engaging in business in a manner that obstructs the free and convenient use of the normal sidewalk, that's different than someone exercising otherwise what's considered protected speech in an area that's considered a traditional public forum. So those are different types of ordinances. The county, for example, has one that restricts their, kind of called free speech zones within the county of where that type of activity can occur, so that there's reasonable alternative channels for individuals in the public to engage in that kind of protected speech. But that would be a different kind of ordinance. We can look down that, but that would, I'd look to your, you know, colleagues to give us that consensus direction to move forward with that, because that would be, those types of ordinances are incredibly fact-intensive. We want to make sure you have some good findings in there, supporting the constitutional basis for the time, place, and manner restrictions that you're imposing, and work closely with staff to be sure it's both not overly restrictive on the speech or on the staff.
So who oversees the trail? That's a county thing.
The county and the sheriff.
And it's the county, and it's county property. So we have a lot of religious groups that are on the trail periodically, and yes, they are in the way sometimes. So do we need to go to the county to ask them to enforce their things, or is it because they're in Dunedin, they have to follow the Dunedin rules?
So Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
You know, we're meeting with the county on the 30th.
Okay.
So I'd like to sit down with them and just kind of informally discuss.
Chat. I think that sounds like a great approach, because there might be, you know, some confusion about, well, if you're on the sidewalk, or if you're on the trail, particularly if you're at those intersection points. But not only that, but that way, so that the county has an opportunity, too, to be aware of the issues and what's going on, and we can get more information about that.
Okay. And talk a little bit about enforcement and.
Yeah, because it is a problem, and I hear about it a lot. That was it. Those were the, and those people are handing out pamphlets as well. So if they're handing out pamphlets, does that then fall under here, or is it still religious and it's?
They're religious.
It's completely separate?
They're religious pamphlets.
That would be, this is governing commercial speech.
Gotcha. Okay.
I have 100 of them, so.
No, I know. I know you're on the trail all the time.
If it's any nonprofit, they can hand out stuff.
Yes.
Not just religious, and they're, yeah, okay.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing none, we'll come back to the commission. Any final comments? Commissioner Franny?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Tor, Vice Mayor Toranga?
I do, thank you.
Commissioner Gao? Commissioner Walker? Okay. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toranga?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. There is a second reading to be held on February 23rd, 2023. And real quick question to you, Nikki. Are we going to have, are there any other ORC?
Yes.
How many?
There are two.
That are coming?
Yes. One is already, is, I also think, ready, is coming after the Equity Study Commission. And then the reason why I said two is because the other, I know, is the subject of the direction for the code enforcement representation.
Oh, yeah.
So that's why there's two left. One, that's very, it's a very short ordinance, but again, with immediate impacts on the legal services that are provided. And then the other is a part of your third agenda item tonight. You'll be taking the necessary statutory step to establish the equity commission for the business tax receipts, and then that's the final one.
Now we have Ordinance 22-20, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Updating Transportation, Conservation, and Support Services Element and Adding Property Rights Element. Nikki, can you please read that ordinance, 22-20, by title only?
Ordinance 22-20, an ordinance of the City of Dunedin, Florida, amending the city's strive for 2035 Comprehensive Plan to Implement and Update the Citywide Multimodal Transportation Master Plan, retrofitting municipal buildings for clean energy, the backyard composting program and industrial composting, the Sustainability Master Plan, and to add a property rights element, providing for codification, providing for transmittals to the reviewing agencies in accordance with the requirements of law, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of ordinance 22-20 on first reading by title only.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Commissioner Franny?
Oh, I'm sorry. On second and final reading. I was in first reading mode. My bad.
I withdraw my motion and make it for the final second.
It's been two readings, whether I said it right or not, but yes.
That is Commissioner Franny and Commissioner Gao. Okay. Francis and George, welcome.
Go ahead, Francis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Commission, City Manager and City Attorney, Frances Leong Sharp, Planner 2 for the City of Dunedin, here presenting you the second and final reading of ordinance 22-20, which is the amendments to the comprehensive plan, which would include the addition of our new element, which is the property rights element, in addition to minor amendments to our transportation, conservation, and support services element. Since the first reading, the amendments were transmitted to the state agencies and other departmental review agencies. And as a result of the review, we did not receive any objections for the proceeding of adopting the ordinance in itself and amendments. So what we have here for you, there are no changes to the document. And once again, if City Commission were to approve the second and final reading, staff would transmit the adopted ordinance to the state for the final adoption. And we are here for questions.
We've done a lot of comp plan stuff, huh? Finally. Very good. Okay. Any questions for George and Francis?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak to the changes to our comp plan, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing none, we'll come back to the commission. Any final comments? Commissioner Franny?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this is the end of a long process. And so really, I think all I want to say, Francis, thanks for all your hard work on this. You know, you've been, you know, really kind of the driver, so really appreciate it, and also the department, but you in particular. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Bye, Susie and Vince and Jocelyn. Commissioner Gao?
Do those just echo what Commissioner Franny said? Well done, Francis. It's nice to be out of the doghouse, the state, on their, on their good side. That's always.
Fully compliant.
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
You know, I just want to say that for those who don't know what a comp plan or comprehensive plan is, it's, it is essentially the city's Bible. What we believe in, our policies, what we support, and everything that we do here has to comply with this comprehensive plan. So it's, it's actually bigger and better than the laws we have, the laws that we have in effect, or the actions that we take in a budget process, the kinds of capital projects we do, the type of environmental things that we do, all of those kinds of things, how much parkland we have, is all based on what's in this comprehensive plan. So if you really want to look at why we do what we do, it's a real good educational thing, and it is on our website, you can find it. It's a really cool document that Francis reorganized and put some nice pictures in, so you don't have to read so many words.
Yeah, made it a lot more fun to read.
It's essentially our strategic plan. It's like our goals and objectives of what we're trying to do in this city for our residents. And we're just really happy to have a new one and an updated one, and thank you for all your hard work.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Toranga?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Mayor Jocelyn?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have Resolution 23-03, Establishing the Equity Study Commission. Nikki, can you please read Resolution 23-03 by title only?
Absolutely, Mayor. Resolution 23-03, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dunedin, Florida, establishing a local business tax equity study commission in accordance with Section 205, 0535 Florida statutes, providing for duties, organization, and duration of the commission, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of Resolution 23-03 by title only.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Gao, thank you. Nikki?
I'll do a bunch of talking tonight. So in connection with the business tax receipt updates that were recommended by the ORC, it was determined that the nature of the revisions would have been substantial, such that the statutes now require that you, in panel, a commission of business owners or representatives within the city to look at the different classifications and the rate study and determine that it's fair and equitable. So that's what this resolution accomplishes. It's a prerequisite to moving forward with that ordinance. They will have a copy of the ordinance. Some key points for the commission, it does provide, consistent with, I think, some of our prior discussions, a deadline of May for the commission to conduct their business. So I think you all had suggested going ahead and each one of you selecting a kind of direct appointment to come and bring back after this commission's established.
I, I, I'm sorry. I thought we kind of said, hey, Jennifer, why don't you use the task force? People from the?
Okay.
Well, we, that's oriented to downtown, so we should.
Oh, okay.
But I think you were talking about the charter review.
Yeah, the charter review was, and then, yes, you're right. So it was, but it was to be more streamlined, rather than doing a, you know, an application period and losing the time for that, since this will now be pushed to May. The task force is a good, I think you're right, so you amend.
Because we could all pick, we don't know where everybody else is picking from, and that's where I think it could get complicated. You know what I'm saying?
I just want it to be a fair process.
Yeah.
Where we get a good.
Exactly.
Find people that really meet different.
But I do think, I mean, I don't want to take any rights away from any of you all for the appointment either, but I, you know, if you're trying to look at equitable across types of business, you got to have one person looking at the different types of businesses. So we're all going to come forward with names that we don't know who the other ones picked. And that's what I'm concerned about with this specific thing.
I just share Commissioner Franny's comment. As long as it's a fair process and we are getting that cross-section, I'm fine with whatever that process is.
And Jennifer can make that recommendation. It will still come to you for a majority vote.
Yeah, it could still be a vote.
Absolutely.
Still see it.
Yep.
Are you, are you guys?
And if it's not fair, we can blame Jennifer.
That's right. Yeah, there you go.
How would we know who you recommend, what type of business you're recommending?
That makes sense.
I'm just, I just want to see the cross-section as well, so I can, yeah.
So Jennifer, do you feel like between you and George and the department over there, I mean, you know what businesses we have?
Mm-hmm. Do you, just for clarification, do you want us to reach out, those, put a list of names before all of you? Is that?
No, no, pick.
No, she, they're asking you for a recommendation of five people.
Pick five and bring them four, and we have to vote on it.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah, just pick five and then just.
Yeah.
I want you to do the work. You can do the work for us.
Yeah.
But I mean, you all have been working with businesses. You know, I mean, you have a business tax list, and, you know, you have the chamber.
Yeah, we have a really comprehensive list, and we'll be more than happy to revise names.
Yeah, I just think it would be easier than us trying to.
Right. Be more than happy to do that. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so any other questions? I'm sorry, I interrupted, I'm sorry, I did interrupt your presentation. Did you have anything else you wanted?
No, that was, I was done. You're fine, Mayor.
The only question I have is just, Nikki, if you could just clarify a little bit what a tax receipt is, just for anybody listening or the public that really.
Sure, they used to be called occupational licenses for a number of years, so some people might be familiar with that term. But it was recognized, it wasn't really a license to do business within the city. It's an authorized state tax to conduct business within the city. So if you are conducting business within the city, you're required to register with the city and pay a small fee. And it's authorized by Chapter 205 Florida statutes. The city has a rate structure depending on the type of business that's engaged in business within the city. And that's, that's what a business tax receipt is. So those are required to be obtained annually. All right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this creation of the Equity Study Commission, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing none, come back to the commission. Any final comments? Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Gao? Vice Mayor? Commissioner Franny?
And I think this is kind of a good thing. You know, gives everybody a chance to understand what's going on.
Fair.
Okay. All right. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toranga?
Aye.
Commissioner Gao?
Aye.
Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
Mayor Jocelyn?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Are there any other items that anybody needs to bring forward, other than the fact that we want to remind folks that our Thursday night, February 9th commission meeting has been canceled? But we will have the meeting, our Tuesday morning meeting on February 7th.
That's correct.
That'll be our next meeting.
Yes.
Anything else that anybody needs to chat about? Forty minutes, baby.
Well, maybe, if you can, just a quick announcement for anybody who cares. PSTA, I'm on the finance chair. I'm on the finance committee now as main chair.
Oh, good for you.
Oh, nice.
Bill Johnson used to be that.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you should call him.
You should. I like Bill.
Yeah. That's a very active committee, too.
It is extremely active, yes. I was on finance, and then I transferred to planning, and I chaired the planning committee. I liked that committee a lot better.
We have new members on PSTA, and so it's.
Oh. Who, wait, who's the new county representative?
We have two.
Who?
Chris Letmala and Brian Scott.
Well, Brian was on there when I was on there, and he was actually a really great.
You know.
He was really great member.
I've heard that, so I'm excited.
He really had very thoughtful, you know, because he's looking at it from the business, from the private business entity side, right? And PSTA tends to look at it a little bit more of public service. And there's always sort of a happy medium that you can find with his comments.
And in conjunction with what you're saying, it's going to be very interesting, because now he's elected.
I know. Yeah. It will be interesting.
An elected official, I mean, on the committee.
Right. But it'll be really interesting to see how Chris does.
But I think it's great, because you have one of those rotating seats. So to have a prominent position on something like the finance committee really says a lot for North County.
Yeah. No, it does. Nine years, baby. I couldn't wait to be done.
Yeah, so.
And I say that with all due respect, because I really loved what I was doing, but it's like, okay, it's a long time.
So just, just to throw out there, everybody's noticed that the governor's baseball dinner is going to be at TD Ballpark.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to get a table for all of us, I think a table of eight. But, you know, it's obviously great that it's going to be here in our own Dunedin, so pretty exciting.
Okay. I know that there is an upcoming, I'm sorry, I don't have the date of it. I was trying to look. There is an upcoming, this is St. Pete Clearwater does their annual marketing extravaganza thing that they do. And that's coming up here in early February. Sue probably knows where it is, when it is. It's, I unmarked, here we go. Thursday, February 9th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at Ruth Eckert Hall. It's a 90-minute presentation highlighting Visiting St. Pete Clearwater Sales and Marketing Plans, including updates from their president and CEO. And then following the presentation, we would enjoy an afternoon reception and the opportunity to meet with their staff and partners. So some of you might have.
What time is it?
It's from 2:00 to 5:00, so it's before the, that evening, we don't have a meeting. And that evening, I know the chamber is doing a wine tasting event at Achiva. But that doesn't start until, I don't know, 6:00 or 7:00. I don't remember.
So what was the date on that?
February 9th. If you want to let Andrea know, she can just RSVP for all of us if you want to go. It is, it's a good thing. What they do is they talk about how they're going to market Pinellas County, areas they're going to focus on. Last year, they were really focusing on, you know, arts tourism and LGBTQ and more, and then other diversity groups, trying to get those folks attracted to Pinellas County. So it's a good thing to see what they're working on and what the bed tax money is going for.
What was the date on that?
February 9th, Thursday, February 9th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at Ruth Eckert Hall. I do plan to go.
It's in my calendar. I just can't remember whether I acknowledged Jennifer or Andrea that.
I don't know. I didn't, I mean, it's not in mine.
I don't have it in mine. I have, TBRPC has a governor's luncheon at State Fairgrounds that day, so, but it's, it's like 11:00 to 2:00, so.
Yeah, you might be able to get back in time.
I might be able to get there during late, so. Because those are good. I've been to them.
Yeah, they're really good, and I'll make sure that, you know, the chamber and the merchants know about it.
We'll be requisitioning helicopters for all of you to get.
Thank you. Yeah.
Can you do that? Right.
Last year it was at, last year it was at the Clearwater Aquarium.
Yes, this is actually more doable.
And, and, and there was a whole group of us that had gone, from the chamber and the merchants and Visit Dunedin. Everybody went. I mean, a lot of people went, and then a number of people here. I know Sue will probably plan to go. So it's always good stuff. That's the only thing I have before our next meeting.
Quick, just, so I participated in the Dunedin Fine Arts Center board meeting earlier this week, and also this week, got a tour and a memorization visit with Dunedin Cares. And I got to just say, both of those organizations are so impressive. And I'm, you know, they're just, they're just tremendous resources for Dunedin. And anything, you know, I can do to help, I will. And maybe bring in a few things to our strategic planning meeting in March, so.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Are we announcing our city hall grand opening, or is that all? Oh, okay, never mind. Not until you absolutely know it's going to happen.
We think it's sometime in March. That's what I, that's what I tell everybody.
I hear it was this year sometime.
But it will be in the evening.
Yeah.
And it'll be open to everybody, and we will have nibbles and little drinks.
I heard there was going to be champagne.
Yes.
I don't know if that's true or not. Well, and we're moving along very well. We're packing our boxes, and we're packing our suitcase, and we're.
I am packed.
Taking pictures off walls.
Twenty-four hours to pack, come on.
But I don't want to announce that date until we have the TCO, which is the Temporary Certificate of Occupancy, in hand.
Yeah, so we're just shooting for middle of March or sometime.
I know Rebecca has her records over there now.
Yes, I did hear that. I did hear that. That rolling file thing was pretty cool.
Had his hard hat on and all, and put them all away, because it's still a construction zone, so.
Oh, you know what I forgot to tell you guys? You guys probably know that Bobby Ayers passed away a few weeks back.
Yes.
Right? Our, I think he was our very first motorcycle cop for Dunedin Police. There is a service on Saturday. I will email you the address. It's 1:00. So I will get you that information. They had to kind of wait until family could get in and all of that, but he was one of our original motorcycle police officers.
And actually, Bill Motley had reached out to me, and actually, he was going to get more information on stuff, because he thought it would be kind of cool at some point if we honored that in some way.
Yeah.
You know, which it was cool, if you look back and you see the pictures of him on his motorcycle, Dunedin Motorcycle Cop, so it's kind of cool.
So I will email you in the morning, you know, what the, or get, I'll get Andrea to put it in your calendar. So that's, I'll just do that. That way.
And the Visit St. Pete Clearwater.
And the Visit St. Pete, yeah. I will do both. That way you have it, and, you know, we'll send flowers.
All right. Well, since we're announcing random things, can I just?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, we have time. We didn't have time at our last meeting.
Randomizing flowers out of scavenger hunt last.
Oh, yes.
Last Saturday, and the team, my team beat the mayor's team.
Oh.
And she didn't like it.
Oh, no, I was not happy. We are very competitive, trust me.
Yeah, but it was a great, I mean, I.
We had so much fun.
I highly suggest anybody who can do it next year, because.
It's like $25.
Yeah, it's $25 for the team, and you learn a lot about Dunedin.
You do.
Because you are up and down and all around, looking for different clues of, you know, what you have to take a picture of and submit in. And it was cool. And I mean, again, it just makes you realize why we love Dunedin.
Yeah, and it was a really fun event. You could take from 10:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon to find all the clues. There was like 20 clues, plus like some extra credit. You know, who knew? I mean, like, one of the extra credits was find peace signs. If
If you think about that, there's not a lot of them around. So it's a, it's a heavy hunt to look for those. We, we got one of the sheriffs to stand in front of his car and hold up. And we, you have to take a picture, right? I mean, we did eventually find peace signs. And you can kind of phone a friend or text a friend, hey, do you know where peace signs is? I texted Greg Brady and he said enchanted spirits, go there.
All I know is that my team beat the mayor's team.
That's all I.
That was really my point for bringing it up.
Yeah. $25 for six people to do it. It was fun. It was really fun, so. All right, anything else? All right, we are adjourned.